Good morning. I now call to order the November 4th meeting of Committee of the Whole. Madam Clerk, please ensure the record reflects the fact that Mayor Haxton is absent with notice. We now move to declaration of interest. Are there any declarations of interest from committee? Seeing none, I'll move to the land acknowledgement. The town of East Goulunbury recognises and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the first peoples of the Williams Treaties First Nation and other Indigenous peoples. And on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Goulunbury's closest First Nation community, and recognise the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. Takes us to community announcements. Are there any members of committee that would like to share a community announcement? Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you Acting Mayor Johns. I have a few announcements, and the first one is about the Remembrance Day ceremony that will be taking place on next Tuesday. At approximately 10:40 a.m. it will start, and it will be held at the front of the civic centre here on Leslie Street. So we will also be unveiling to the public at that time the new crosswalk that we have, lest we forget. So it's an opportunity for the community to come together to remember those who have sacrificed themselves for our freedom in this country. And on a bright note, the Holly Berry Show is taking place this Saturday between 10 a.m. and 3 p.m. It's an annual tradition at the Holland Landing Community Centre where you can buy Christmas artisanal gifts in preparations for the holidays. And all of the proceeds are donated to the Holland Landing Community Centre. That's the tradition by the organiser. And as well, we have the EG Santa Claus Parade start that's taking place on Sunday, November the 16th. We're doing it a little bit differently this year. We're starting later in the day at 3 p.m., so the parade will take place between 3 p.m. and 4 p.m. And the market and tree lighting ceremony will take place between 4 p.m. and 6 p.m. So lots of important and exciting events during this season and month of November. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yeah, Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just wanted to advise committee and our residents that on Friday, the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks made an announcement, a rather wide sweeping announcement regarding our conservation authorities in the province. And they are, although the details are still to be determined, there is going to be a new agency called the Ontario Provincial Conservation Agency that will be established. It is essentially, there's going to be a consolidation of the 36 currently existing conservation authorities in the province. And part of this is looking at trying to standardise resources and consistent ways of looking at digital permitting, flood monitoring and mapping, and they're looking at a regional watershed based consolidations. Part of the reason why they're doing that is actually there are almost 240 municipalities have more than one conservation authority to work with. So there's a great deal of duplication of effort, and so this is hoped to try and streamline some of that. As I understand it, there's going to be further details released shortly that will have a 45-day comment period. And if I have anything to share on behalf of my role on the LSRCA board, I will certainly bring it to this table. But you can expect that the LSRCA will also have comments to make. So just wanted to advise committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other, seeing none, I have one that I would like to share. I would like to share that November 2nd to 8th, communities across Canada will mark National Shelter Appreciation Week, and it's a time to recognise the essential role that animal shelters play in animal welfare and our community. So the Ontario SPCA and the Humane Society work closely with all municipalities, including East Goulunbury, to support animals and the people who care about them. From adoption, emergency boarding and animal care, to bylaws, emergency response and community outreach, animal centres are vital partners in creating safe compassionate communities. So I would like to thank the Ontario SPCA for the caring and important work they do, the programmes they deliver and the safe and compassionate environment they provide for animals. So with that, that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item E. It is a closed meeting, and I need a mover to be able to proceed to that closed meeting. Do we have a mover? Counselor Crone. Be it resolved that committee proceed into a closed meeting of committee of the whole council at 10:06 a.m. to deal with the following matters. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, Municipal Act, Section 231, 2F, land matter. All those in favor? Motion carries. So we'll just pause for one moment while we're able to go in camera.
Welcome back, folks. It's 12:46 and we are on to item two of the agenda of the Committee of the Whole, which is to rise and report from the closed meeting of Committee of the Whole. Looking for a mover. Councillor Leahy, be it resolved that Committee rise and report from the closed meeting of Committee of the Whole of Council at 12:46 PM. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Folks, if we could just take a suggested, what is the time for the suggestion of the pause of the meeting for recess?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay. So be it. 12:51.
And we're live.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is item F under deputations. The first deputation, we have Mr. A. Lankoff making a deputation to Committee regarding item J two Development Services Planning Branch Report, DS 202531, as it relates to 18929 Second Concession Road, the heritage removal request of Mr. Lankoff, if you could join us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Mayor, members of council. On today's Committee of the Whole Council agenda, items J one, J two, and J three concern heritage removal requests. These same matters appeared in the Heritage Advisory Committee, HAC, minutes of September 18, 2025, as items G one, G two, and item two. The minutes state for one item, be it resolved that the HAC recommends that council remove the property from the Register of Properties of Cultural Heritage Value or Interest, and for the other two items state, taking demolition request to CWC on October 21st. It's clear the HAC has significant influence over council's heritage-related decisions. The town's website says, "The committee is a legislated committee and shall advise council on all matters related to the conservation of buildings of historic or architectural value and on all matters relating to designations in accordance with the Ontario Heritage Act." Given East Goulunberry for the Heritage Register Review final report, which took a year and a half to complete, at the session, the consultant said they had presented to the HAC and asked questions through staff. In their October 7th report, they also wrote, "Priority number three emphasizes strengthening the role and effectiveness of East Goulunberry's Heritage Advisory Committee in conserving and promoting the town's built heritage." That statement again underscores the HAC's central role in heritage decision-making. Given that importance, I must question why the HAC operates with such limited transparency. The names of its members are not posted on the town's website, even though the Municipal Act 2001 makes such information public. No 2025 meeting minutes were available until last week, and then only after community member raised the issue with the HAC council liaison on October 26, as shown by emails. Section 239 in bracket seven of the Municipal Act 2001 requires municipalities to record all resolutions, decisions, and other proceedings of meetings of council, local boards, and committees of council. Yet until last week, there were no posted minutes since September 2024, and minutes still have not been posted for July, August, October, November, and December 2024. The town also fails to post HAC meeting dates, although other committees list theirs publicly. The website provides no information on appointment criteria or qualifications for HAC members. There is no mention of heritage expertise or relevant work experience. At the October 29 intercession, I asked town staff about this. The reply was that, "The committee is made up of volunteers and they don't always have expertise." This is concerning. We don't know what qualifies members, or even if they are residents of East Goulunberry, which would be essential for understanding our community's heritage context. What's more, the town's heritage consultant is based in another province and appears to be relying on input from a local committee that may lack relevant expertise. Councillor Leahy, the only councillor who attended the afternoon info session, explained that the council liaison interviews HAC applicants. Yet, the liaison's town bio shows no qualifications in heritage or planning. This raises another question. How can a liaison without relevant experience vet potential candidates effectively? In January 2025, there were six HAC members. By February and March, only four remained, including the vice chair's departure. There is no public record explaining why. Both the February and March minutes state a quorum was present, but the town's own website says, "The committee should have a minimum of five members." If only four were appointed, the committee was improperly constituted, and therefore could not form a legal quorum. Under such circumstances, its meeting should have been suspended until vacancies were filled, but those meetings were not. Additionally, one member has been absent for every meeting in 2025, raising the question, how many active members does the HAC actually have? On September 18, 2025, Geoff Brown and I gave a presentation to the HAC. Only four members attended. Before the meeting began, we were told that Adam Layton, project lead for the Goldberg Group, the planet for the developer of 31 Sand Road, would also attend. Mr. Layton had not attended any previous HAC meetings, nor did he attend the developer's own public meeting on October 1st, or the October 21st statutory public meeting.
Mr. Lankoff, if I could remind you the five minutes, if you could look to wrap this up, please.
I'm doing my best, thank you. The town later stated on September 18, 2025, "Information related to the potential heritage resources of 31 Sand Road was discussed at the town's Heritage Advisory Committee." In fact, the information was our presentation. We were only told minutes before the meeting that Mr. Layton would be attending. Had we known in advance, we would have declined to present, as we were not comfortable sharing sensitive findings in front of representative of the developer. findings in front of a representative of the developer.
I'll give you 30 more seconds, sir.
Okay.
I'm not allowed to give you 30 more seconds. Procedurally, you're actually five minutes, so if you can be respectful to me, I can be respectful to you to please wrap this up. Otherwise, I need to go to committee to give you a time extension.
Thank you. I'm doing my best. We asked the HAC to expedite the listing of 31 Sand Road. Only one member asked a question. The others in the councillor liaison remained silent. On October 10, the corporate services member Anan stated the town has the authority to add their property to the heritage registry. Despite council passing a motion on September 16 to list the property, no such action has occurred. These patterns suggest that community concerns are being sidelined while developer interests advance. Accordingly, I formally request two forensic audits. A forensic audit into all financial and administrative dealings between the town of East Goulunbury-
Counselor Roy D. Clemente, you're suggesting the procedure bylaw to extend?
The procedural bylaw says five minutes, and the topic was regarding-
A forensic audit into all financial administrative dealings between the town of East Goulunbury and 31 Sand GP Limited Tentacore Development regarding the proposed development of 31 Sand Road Halen Landing.
Mr. Lankoff, and I, Counselor Roy D. Clemente, was speaking.
The deputation was supposed to have been about the three items on our agenda today, the three heritage removals. Mr. Lankoff has exceeded his five-minute allotment. I would like to proceed with the rest of our agenda, please.
Mr. Lankoff, you have been the five minutes, and you have been graciously awarded additional time. I would respect that. I thank you for your deputation, and if you seek to communicate further, you could submit an additional deputation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lankoff, for coming today. Looking for a moving receipt of Mr. Lankoff, we have Counselor Carruthers looking to move the receipt. All those in favor, motion carries. That takes us to item G on the agenda. Mr. O'Connor, I believe the municipal clerk is actually helping to introduce this item.
Yes, and thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce Rick O'Connor, who is here today to make a presentation to committee entitled "Mayors, Acting Mayors, and Deputy Mayors: Roles and Responsibilities." Mr. O'Connor is semi-retired after a 35-year career in public service, during which he held the titles of city clerk, city solicitor, and city clerk and solicitor at the City of Ottawa. He now assists municipalities and local boards with governance challenges with the goal of achieving greater transparency, accountability, and openness in local government. A member of numerous municipal and provincial bodies, Mr. O'Connor participated in various legislative initiatives and developments, including Bill 68, Modernizing Ontario's Municipal Legislation Act, Bill Three, Strong Mayor's Building Homes Act, and Bill 23, More Homes Built Faster Act. He has testified as an expert witness on ethics and conflict of interest in both the Toronto and Collingwood judicial inquiries, and has been recognized for his governance work with the AMCTO Prestige Award, the Elaine Robinson Volunteer of the Year Award from the Ontario Goods Roads Association, and the Queen's Jubilee Medal. He's a regular speaker at the municipal governance conferences, and most recently served as an adjunct professor at Carleton University, where he taught the Law and Ethics course in the School of Public Policy and Administration. With that, Mr. Chair, please join me in welcoming Mr. O'Connor, and I will now turn the presentation to Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, you'll recall in September, this was a council resolution, two parts in the resolution with regards to looking at the acting mayor bylaw, updating it, providing additional clarity, seeking out what the effects of section 242 of the municipal act may be on it when it changed in 2017, looking at any implications for the strong mayor powers, and aligning with various other bylaws that the town may have that may be implicated as a result of the acting mayor role. Next slide, please. Says very briefly, Mr. Chair, overview of the statutory framework, which is going to be largely dealing with municipal act, going to look at some bylaws for East Goulunbury, going to do some comparative models, just put a couple up for review by the committee to address absences of the head of council, and then I'll just offer some final observations and potential next steps. Next slide, please. So, Mr. Mayor, when we were going through this presentation, I was working with your staff. These are all of the sections of the municipal act that we were looking at in various degrees. I will not read through them all, but there will be a couple that we will be looking at, like section 242 that you can see, and some references to 267, 268. And in particular, the last one, which is all in capital letters, which is the way it appears in the legislation, those are the strong mayor powers. So, those are the various sections. I'll also refer to section 23.1 of the municipal act, which is not on here, and that's my oversight. That section is entitled, "Delegation of Council of Its Powers and Duties," and also, we're going to talk about the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act in a couple of instances. Next slide, please. So, just for some historical context, as you can see, you had a bylaw back in 2001, which was actually a deputy mayor bylaw, and I can share with you, when we look at either the old legislation under 1990, or the new legislation in 2001 and onwards, there is no definition for deputy mayor, acting mayor, it all speaks to head of council, and there's a couple of sections that refer to that specifically. So, right off the mark, there's nothing for a deputy mayor or for an acting mayor in the legislation. Having said that, when you look at section 269 sub three, this is what is actually cited in your bylaw, in that section, and I'm just going to read it, because it eventually becomes section 242. And I think it's worth noting what is not in this particular clause I'm going to read here, which is in the later one. Says, "The council of any municipality may, by bylaw, appoint a member of the council to act from time to time in the place of the head of council when the head of council is absent from the municipality, or absent through illness, or the office is vacant. And while so acting, such member has and may exercise all the rights, powers, and authority of the head of council." Full stop, period. There was nothing in the earlier legislation, the 1990, that talked about anything else other than 100% of the powers of the acting head of, or the head of council, go to the acting head. The key points there, it was just an automatic alternate. Your bylaw, in this particular instance, from 2001, was rather unique, because section two said that the deputy mayor shall, mandatory language, act in the place of the head of council when the head of council is absent from the municipality, or absent through illness, if the office is vacant, and while so doing, the deputy mayor has and may exercise all the rights and powers and authority of the head of council. So, they literally wrote the section from the old municipal act, section 69.3, put it in there, and it all goes. And this continues on until 2006. Next slide, please. So, when we want to talk about what bylaws might be affected when Goulunbury, or should Goulunbury decide to look at its acting mayor model, we're going to look at 200641, the creation of the original acting mayor position, and I'm going to look at that just momentarily. But I want to reference a couple of other bylaws, just so council can sort of get a bit of the flavor of what may or may not be concerning if you change the acting mayor bylaw. And the first one is the procedure bylaw, which you see there, which was as amended. This is from 2009, and it continues on. And in this particular bylaw, it actually begins by saying in the whereas clause, the whereas are called the recital clauses, it recites section 238. Doesn't talk about 23.1, doesn't talk about 242. The recital clause just says, section 238, which requires a procedure bylaw. So, that's perfectly good. Again, no deputy mayor references, no acting mayor in the municipal act 2001. When you look at the, sorry, I'm not quite there yet, but that's okay. When you look at the actual bylaw, the bylaw defines chair as a person presiding at a meeting. So, it's very generic. It talks about an acting chair, which remarkably says means a member appointed to act from time to time in the place and the stead of the chair pursuant to section 242. So, your procedure bylaw ties in directly to section 242, and says it's for the purposes of dealing with these matters. It also defines, very briefly, a presiding officer, means any person who is presiding at a meeting. And then finally, the last section you have in your procedure bylaw currently, is section nine, which says presiding officer. And the reason I raise this is, it talks about presiding officer, and then you look at the sidelines when it has these little interpretation indentations. It says acting mayor to preside, and then it says mayor's designation. So, there's a number of different pieces of language, terms, technology, or terminology that's being used. And then when you talk about the presiding officer, it talks about the acting mayor per the acting mayor grid. So, again, if council is looking to go forward and review this, perhaps you will look at reviewing the sections of the procedure bylaw, because it's talking about presiding officers, and that may have some impact with regards to your acting mayor approach. Then you have 2015 bylaw 83, which is the Banking Signing Authorities bylaw. This bylaw actually, in its fourth recital, says, "Whereas, section 23 of the municipal act authorizes the ability for the municipality to delegate its powers and duties under the municipal act, subject to certain restrictions." And that's so close, but it's a bit of a typo, because I can share with you, section 23, and we talked about staff, and they said, yep, ghost in the machine. Section 23 is actually all about agreements respecting private services with regards to water, waste, private roads, those sorts of things. So, we know this is a typo. It should be section 23.1, and 23.1, that is the summary of what that section says. It says council can delegate a lot of its authorities and powers with regards to various things, including the acting mayor. When you look at section 23.1, which, again, is the section this is really talking about, it says, "Without limiting any of the sections in the act, it authorizes the municipality to delegate its powers and duties under this act or any other act to a person or body subject to the restrictions set out in this part." And that's the key. The restrictions in this part are what's going to prohibit council from delegating certain things. But when you read through all of the restrictions, they sound very much like the core details of what council does, and none of these can be delegated. So, council cannot delegate its power to incorporate municipal corporations. Council cannot delegate adopting an official plan. Council cannot delegate the passing of a comprehensive zoning bylaw. Council cannot delegate the adopting of a community improvement plan under the planning act. You cannot delegate or adopting the amendment of a budget. You can, because it doesn't restrict it, do what you like with your acting mayor models. So, when you talk about the legislation, you want to talk about section 242 possibly, but also section 23.1. The last one I want to talk about with regards to this, well, there's two. The first one is the 2023018 bylaw, which specifically references the section 242 of the act. It does not reference section 23.1. I don't think that's a concern with regards to statutory interpretation. Statutory interpretation requires anyone who would be reviewing this bylaw, such as a judge, to look at it in a very holistic manner, and if they did that, they would look at the report which attempted with this, and that report said, "While acting in the capacity of the acting mayor, the scheduled member of council may be called to preside over council and committee meetings, represent the municipality at official functions, and carry out the duties of the head of council as required." It does not include that subsequent amendment to the municipal act, which talked about only for the purposes of dealing with meeting matters. So, it's very broad. The final one I want to just refer to briefly is you have a bylaw 2025034, which is your emergency management program and emergency plan. It specifically references the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act, and specifically sets out authorities for the head of council and his or her designate. So, again, using slightly different language, not saying acting mayor, not saying deputy mayor, but using slightly different language, which you may want to consider looking at, should anything be further be done with your acting mayor model. Next slide, please. So, when you look at the bylaw from 2006, the original bylaw, which addressed these issues, it literally said governance, public and other functions, and emergency operations. Unfortunately, they're not further defined in this bylaw, so they don't appear anywhere. The resolution clauses, though, sorry, the recital clauses do talk about the role of the head of council, and it lists everything that he does. And then it talks about being the chief executive officer, and of course, there's legislation under that. So, there's a lot of things to be had in this bylaw with regards to what powers and authorities that the head of council may have under that. Unfortunately, doesn't go into any great deal of explanation. Next slide, please. So, then you have the transition from 2006, which goes all the way to 2023, and then you reestablish the rotational acting mayor schedule. Next slide, please. So, just very briefly, trying to summarize everything that is before you with the various bylaws, and also your acting mayor model that you currently have, talks about governance, presiding at council meetings, so the procedure bylaw, and as I said, sections 9.1 and 9.3 with regards to presiding officer, representation, attending various public meetings and ceremonial events for the mayor, financial authority under the authorization to sign checks when the mayor is unavailable, emergency leadership with regards to the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act and your related bylaw, and then just actually the rotation assignment themselves. Next slide, please. One of the specific questions in the resolution that was posed back in September was, what about the strong mayor powers? Does that affect the acting mayor bylaw? What is it? And you'll read down, I've listed just very briefly what the major powers of the strong mayor is. And then the first, under the key distinction, you'll see is that they cannot be delegated to an acting mayor. And in this regard, I could take you through all the legislation. It's very boring and dry. It's much easier to read the amended version of the Ontario Municipal Counselor's Guide, which is online. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs updated it after the strong mayor powers, and it actually said, "At times, the head of council seat may become vacant. Municipalities that have strong mayor powers are required to fill the head of council seat through a by-election." It goes on to say that if the head of council seat becomes vacant after March 31 in the year of a regular election, which would be after March 31 of next year, the municipality is required to appoint the head of council. And then they point out, "The appointed head of council would not have any additional powers and duties as set out in the strong mayor powers." They conclude by saying, "Strong mayor powers and duties do not transfer to an interim or acting head of council." So, I think the ministry is being fairly clear that in order to employ strong mayor powers, you have to be elected in order to get that authority. Next slide, please. So, just very brief mention of the alternates, which staff thought it would be appropriate just to remind members of council. Section 267 of the act talks about there being a temporary vacancy in the head of council position, and it literally says where the absence exceeds one month, and that's the alternate member that you have a possibility of putting onto regional council. And then section 268, slightly different clause, talks about temporary replacement, and it talks about the fact that when a person, presumably a councillor, is unable to attend a meeting at the upper tier for any reason. So, it's not about a month-long vacancy, it's not about anything else. It just says, "You can do this from time to time for any reason." But I leave that for staff, who've been far more involved in those sorts of things than I have. Next slide, please. So, I want to take a moment and just introduce to the committee members some comparative models, and I've chosen three. There's no magic in them. There's probably many more models out there. And I use the term comparative models to address absence of the head of council. I want to make sure we're all on the same wavelength of, I'm not talking about municipal comparators. I'm talking about comparative models for the purposes of this exercise. When you look at municipal comparators, and I deal with municipalities all the time, they will literally tell me, oh, here's the five municipalities we routinely look at when we're doing public policy changes. So, those would be the comparators. This is not what that is. This is just looking at the models that are available, and what I deem to be fairly flexible with regards to what you may put in the absence of a head of council for your acting mayor model. What I can tell you is, the City of Ottawa has three deputy mayors. And you may be curious as to why the City of Ottawa has three deputy mayors at any one time, and the answer is, originally, the first mayor that introduced this model, he said he wanted a rural councillor, an urban councillor, and a suburban councillor. So, at any time, if he, she, or they were off, and a rural emergency occurred, he would turn the matter over to the rural member. he would turn the matter over to the rural member. So it 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 has remained that way to this day um at the city of Ottawa. Uh, the London model has one deputy, and I'm going to talk more about that momentarily. And the city of Burlington model has six deputies. And I did not reach out to Berlin to find out why they have six deputies. But when you look at their uh the the composition of their council, they have six wards, then they have six ward counselors, and each one of them is a deputy. So it may simply be that that was a good number for them, or that they wanted to make sure every member of council had some deputy duties uh with regards to their model. What I can tell you is there is no standard form model for any acting mayor duties. Any unique features that your municipality may have, and as I said, the city of Ottawa has the urban rural uh and uh urban rural and suburban uh particularities, that may be something that will influence how you address your acting mayor model. And it also demonstrates through these three models, the flexibility that's available in any such by law. Next slide, please. So the city of Ottawa, uh as I said, has three deputy mayors. Um, they serve on a rotational basis, one presides at meetings when the mayor is unavailable. Uh, and council may appoint um another debt, if all of the deputies are full and unavailable, uh council can appoint a replacement. The city of Ottawa by law um being drafted includes both subsection uh sorry, section two forty two of the municipal act and section twenty three point one, puts it in the recital clauses, talks about the fact that under section twenty three point one, none of the restrictions in that section of the municipal act relate to the powers and duties exercised by deputy mayors or acting deputy mayors. So that's why we put that reference in there, and it may be something you will want to consider doing. The other thing I want to do is just read a couple of sections uh out of the city of Ottawa by law to give you some flavor. Section one says members of council are hereby appointed as deputy mayors to act from time to time in the place of the mayor when the mayor is absent or absent through illness or the office is vacant. And while so doing, such counselors have and may exercise all the rights, powers and authority of the mayor for the period of time uh that is set out in the uh schedule in the by law. So again, no restrictions. Literally says the mayor, if there's deputy mayors and they're doing stuff, they have all of the powers of the mayor. And we know, just having talked about the strong mayor powers, they don't have those powers. And section three, it talks about the fact that council may also by resolution appoint other members of council to act in the place of deputy mayors if the three appointed deputy mayors are not available. And while so acting, the appointed member of council shall also have and exercise all the rights, power and authority of the mayor for the period specified in the council resolution. So once again, um council could step in if there was a lack of deputy mayors, I don't recall it ever happening because there's three of them. Um, but from time to time, uh it could happen and they would respond accordingly. So that's the city of Ottawa model, next slide, please. So the city of London model, which is actually ironically my hometown, um I think has a very, very good policy, deputy mayor policy. And as you can see, it sets out the deputy's mayor's duties uh and council can act and appointing one. What I like and find interesting about the policy is there is no reference to the municipal act whatsoever. They don't talk about section two forty two, they don't talk about section twenty three point one, they don't mention strong mayor powers. But they do talk about in a very clear policy statement, what the expectations for the deputy mayor are. And again, different from the city of Ottawa, but it says, this policy establishes the process for the appointment of a deputy mayor to assist the mayor in carrying out their powers and duties and or act in the place of the head of council or other member of council designated to preside at meetings in the municipality's procedure by law when the head of council or the designated member is absent or refuses to act or the office is vacant. And this shall include general business continuity in the absence of or refusal to act by the mayor, attendance at meetings and events on behalf of the mayor, participation and representation on civic committees, local boards, commissions or agencies and other related organizations, and assistance with the operating and capital budget process through participation on the audit committee. So again, very clear in the city of London model, what they want the deputy mayor to do and how they will go about uh achieving that. Next slide, please. And the last model that I'll just briefly refer to is the city of Burlington model. Um, and you could call it the portfolio model if you were so inclined. Um, the uh city of Burlington spent about three or four years examining this particular model, so they didn't do it uh with any degree of hurry. But at the end of the day, they decided that they would have six deputy mayors with portfolio. And I won't read through uh all of them, but you can see some of them, I'll read through them, I won't give them in detail. Deputy mayor for business and red tape reduction, deputy mayor for community engagement and partnerships, deputy mayor for the environment, deputy mayor for housing, deputy mayor for strategy and budgets, and deputy mayor for recreation and community services. So again, a broad range of things um that they have put under their various deputy mayors, their portfolios, uh which, as I said, they took about three or four years to complete doing. Next slide, please. So, Mr. Chair, just some fairly quick closing observations and potential next steps that the committee and council may take. Um, as you've seen, just a very high level, there is a diverse number of provisions in the municipal act two thousand and one, which either directly or indirectly talks about acting mayors and deputy mayors, may require some additional work uh should the committee and council decide to move forward. Um, because when you look at these sections of the act, as I as I laid them out, there's no comprehensive framework for municipalities to follow. You can't say, under the acting mayor model, I can go A, B, C, D, E, uh and then you're done, it it is all over the map, it's in various places, you need to find them. And then council ultimately, should it decide to deal with it, uh needs to determine a number of things. So um it's going to talk again, acting and deputy mayor not defined in the statute. It's important to understand that uh when you look at the provisions in greater detail, you know, what is it council wants to do? You're looking at section two twenty five, the role of the head of council. You're looking at section two twenty six substituting for the head of the council on other bodies other than another council. Section two twenty six one, the head of council being the chief executive officer. And when you read through, there's various sections in there. Part of the rules or part of the requirements are to participate in and foster activities that enhance the economic, social, environmental, uh well-being of the municipality and its residents. You're looking at section two forty two, the absence of the head and how it fits with section twenty three point one, the power to delegate, which does not affect um your power to delegate under the head of council's powers and duties. So, and as always, if you do delegate and you're talking about you, someone being an acting mayor, they do not have strong mayor powers, they only apply um with someone who has been elected to that position. Um, a- as I said earlier, um you'll want to look at how many uh deputy mayors you may have, one at a time, two, three, uh or in Burlington, the case is six. Um, and you want to ensure that the number adequately addresses supporting the municipality for business continuity purposes. And finally, you may want to ask yourself, what breadth of the powers and duties would a deputy mayor or an acting mayor have? And you want to look at whether or not they are just doing what I consider the traditional triumvirate. Are they just going to preside over meetings, attend formal functions and address emergency matters? Or are they going to look a little bit further, like the city of Ottawa by law, which says, has all the mayor's powers and duties? Or do you want to follow something like a portfolio style uh in Burlington, where you're going to set out exactly what the portfolio is uh and how the deputy mayors are going to achieve uh their goals? Whatever works best for East Willimbury at the end of the day, looking ahead to potential next steps. Um, I would think that the committee and council might wish to pursue it further. Um, if they do so, I would recommend that the committee and council provide written direction to staff. Uh, I'm a big fan of that, finding out uh after years that is very the best thing you can have is a written direction from council or committee stating exactly uh what they want, there can be no or less confusion. Um, this to go into a comprehensive report, the report could include, you know, the options of where you want to go with acting mayor or deputy mayor by law. Do you want to talk about how it's going to implicate the other uh by laws that you have? Um, the banking uh signing by law and the emergency management by law. Um, should you look at um corresponding amendments to other sections of your procedure by law, like section nine? And are you going to look at whether or not any changes to the acting uh mayor provisions could affect such mandatory policies as transparency and accountability, public notice policy and the delegation of powers and duties policy? Finally, I suggest um that you would always want to keep uh ensuring that there's public consultation and appropriate stakeholder engagement, so using whatever's in your town's notice by law and your rules of procedure. And Mr. Chair, that ends my overview. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, we uh we sincerely appreciate what you just went through, that was uh, there was a lot there, that's for sure. Um, open it up to the members of committee, we have councillor Carruthers.
Uh, thank you, I believe that I might have been the one that actually raised this to begin with because I noticed that our acting mayor by law um quoted two four two, but truncated it. So my question and and the purpose of that motion was, we wanted clarity on what powers our current by law gives to the acting mayor and if it is appropriate, given that our by law is based on two four two and two four two says with respect to presiding at meetings. So so that's the first step is that, I understand you want direction from us, but we are sort of asking for an opinion on, is it good enough the way it is? Should it be updated to accurately reflect the twenty seventeen change to four two? Um, so so that that's my first point. My next point is um when we look at when this was established, we had a mayor who never missed a meeting. Um, she would occasionally in the summertime miss a ribbon cutting because she was at the cottage, so someone would step in. So the acting mayor rotation made sense when it was somebody cutting a ribbon here or or there, but not when we now um, our mayor has been on her second or third long-term absence this term. So we're now looking at, it's not just a ribbon cutting. So what is it? It's not just presiding at a meeting, is it more than that? We hear that, yes, it's it's signing authority, okay. Um, what other powers does our acting mayor have? And what are the powers should our acting mayor have? So that's, you know, my, though my questions are around where where are we currently at? And getting clarity on where we're currently at, so before saying where we want to go, we need to know where we're at. So we're in the last year of the term, so I don't think we should be making any huge changes. Um, but I do think, like when when you talked about community consultation, if we do want to move to a deputy mayor role, then starting that communication process now, so that we could have something in place for next term, would make sense, so. Um, and that only occurred to me now when you talked about community consultation, that this isn't just a decision for us, but this is a decision we need to take out to the community. Uh, so I'm wondering if you can answer my original question about our by law quotes two four two but truncates it, and should we be adding back in with respect to presiding at meetings, so it accurately reflects two four two?
On on that point, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Chair, um absolutely, I think if you can tidy up the by law, um I think you could put that wording back in. I don't think it's necessary, but if you are going to go down that path, absolutely clarity. But also then you put in uh section twenty three point one to allow that broad should council decide that that's the way it wants to go, to make sure that when someone steps into that acting mayor position for a period of time, they have all of the powers of mayor. Maybe you don't want that, maybe you want to say, no, we like those three traditional ones, you know, going to head up meetings, going to go to formal occasions and those sorts of things. But I don't think there's anything that is dire or going to be lost in the current by law. But I do like the idea, as the as the member put it, that you could clean it up a bit and you could put in a a more fulsome resolution or a more fulsome uh whereas clause.
Uh, because I think we we run into a problem when um the mayor is absent and it it straddles two different acting mayors. So you've got, if you give the acting mayor too many roles and responsibilities, they're tackling a project or an issue, and then the acting mayor role uh moves to the next person. So I think we're, the acting mayor role being rotational is intended just for filling in, not for fulfilling all the roles, because that would require someone who's there for more than than just a couple of weeks before it moves on to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carruthers, we have uh councillor Leahy and then councillor Crohn.
Thank you very much through you, Acting Mayor Johns. Uh, first I want it noted for the record that uh when we voted on this resolution, it was to direct staff to come back to us with some clarification. And I, and so for the benefit of the public, uh I was unaware at that time that um they would be hiring external consultants to find the answers to our questions, so it may have um affected the way I voted at that time. So I wanted that to be noted. Secondly, uh one of my fellow councillors has said that we, that the consultant is asking for direction from us. That's not uh really how it works, as far as I understand it. We're making a an incredible assumption that we are now going to change the rules midstream uh that we had established unanimously at the beginning of council on the rotating acting mayor. So this is very problematic. We were only looking for the answers to a couple of basic questions. And one, the most important question for me uh was because of the length of the the period in which an absence has taken place, do we have a voice at York Region Council? Because our only representative at York Region Council is the acting mayor. And so that's what we are working on with right now. And so what I would like clarification on, because according to the region and the and our acting mayor was sent to Ottawa and paved for by the region, he is serving in the acting mayor role, representing East Willimbury. And so we we are, it is fundamentally anti-democratic if we start changing the rules mid midterm, well, we're past midterm, now we're going into, as of May first, people can nominate uh put, submit nomination papers. So my question is, and still is, what are the powers of the acting mayor in terms of serving as in their role on York Region? Because that's what we've been working with so far. Do we need to have a by law to do that, so that we don't go unrepresented at the regional level?
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify?
I Go ahead.
Um, I I said very specifically that we should not be changing anything in the last uh year of council. We are looking strictly for clarity on what the role is. Thank you.
So, Mr. Uh, Mr. O'Connor, councillor Leahy had a a question for you.
So, Mr. Chair, I I apologize if it was less than clear. Um, what I was trying to suggest is, if the committee or council wanted to do something, um then they were perfectly in a position to do so. Um, I did add at the end that I think that there's other steps to take uh looking at what kind of model you may change to. And I absolutely understand, um ran a lot of elections, uh May first, everything's going to change uh across four hundred and forty-four municipalities. As for the current status of the delegate or the alternate person going to regional council, that's more of a legal issue, I'd defer to the uh to the town solicitor.
Uh, is there any, so so sorry, councillor Leahy, do you have a follow-up prior to that?
Yes. So again, the the assumption seems to be um being made that we need to change the model. And perhaps we need to look at the model, that's what it says, what model do we want to change to? We we shouldn't be making any assumption that we want to make any significant changes to the model. And if we are looking for a public input into the governance model of our of our council, then maybe this would be better in terms of a referendum question on the ballot in the next election, whether we'd like to change to a model where we have a deputy mayor rather than a rotating acting schedule. And the basis on which that would be considered, who would be the deputy mayor? Whether it was the person who received the next highest number of votes or what what if, but if we're going to consider changing things, perhaps if you really truly want to put it to the people, you add a referendum question on the next ballot in the next election.
So lots of discussion points as it to, as it pertains to Mr. Um, Mr. O'Connor's uh report with the way uh other folks do it and the opportunity to uh engage legal on clarity. Um, is there any members of the committee that wish to um engage Mr. O'Connor on his presentation? Uh, councillor Crohn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh through you to Mr. O'Connor, I appreciate your presentation. And uh just, th- there was one comment you made that uh triggered something in me. You were talking about the the strong mayor's powers and that it, they cannot be conferred on an acting member. Uh, and I think that's, we all have a pretty good understanding of that. But if there was a situation in which midterm uh in in council, there was a, the mayor uh decided to step aside uh and for whatever reason, and there was a by election. by-election, the person who won that by-election is now the acting, is the duly-elected mayor, would they then have strong mayors conferred on them?
Yes.
Or would you have to wait? Okay. So, it's not something that's assigned merely at a general election? Okay. All right. And, I'm going to ask you a, an even less philosophical question. We have some debate here amongst my colleagues about whether, you heard about the, you gave the, you know, the example of sometimes people are assigned the deputy mayor role by virtue of winning the most votes in the election, which is fine. But, if you're a counselor that was acclaimed, that could be considered having the most votes. So, let's, and please, you know, note that you're probably, you know, going to be impacting bragging rights here. But, what has the highest, the higher notoriety? Is it being acclaimed, or having the most physical votes cast in your name?
Well, again, there's nothing in law or in any bylaws that I've seen in that regard. I've been fond of many acclaimed counselors, because then I don't have to run an election in their area. So, I prefer that as a former clerk, but I don't think it, I don't think it's one way or the other. Thank you.
I got nothing.
Counselor Roy D. Clemente.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I think there's an important distinction for us to make here, and that is the distinction between a deputy mayor and an acting mayor. And, the reality is that we don't have a deputy mayor, and maybe in the next term of council, we should consider implementing some sort of structure. It sounds to me like the most common, given the examples that we have, that the most common would be that a mayor would appoint a deputy mayor. And, that I would assume would happen at the first, the first meeting of council after, at the inaugural meeting of council. Would that be correct, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. So, aside from that, we can set that aside and consider that, and maybe that's something that, given our circumstances, it would be helpful. The bigger question that we're trying to deal with right now is the present situation, and that is understanding the role of the acting mayor, because, as you had said, Mr. O'Connor, the deputy mayor is not defined in statute, but it appears that the acting mayor is. Correct?
Not directly, but they do talk about the head of council being replaced, and yes, that type of wording.
And, so, our biggest concern, I think, was, at least mine was, was that of business continuity, and ensuring that, not just for our council, but for our staff, that we had, in the absence of the mayor, that we had somebody who was in the, who was able to assist staff with providing direction. That it wasn't, it's not enough to just be chairing a meeting or going to a ribbon cutting, but that there was strategic vision and leadership and support provided to staff and to other members of council, because we have some members of council who are experienced and others who are new to the role. And, there are opportunities for guidance, I guess, is where it comes from. So, setting the agenda with the CAO, working with the clerk to manage the meeting and so on. And, so, for me, I wanted to understand whether we were in the position to be able to provide business continuity. It's a separate bylaw. Thank you.
That's separate.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much, through you, Acting Mayor Johns. I wanted to make an observation that one's skill set is not necessarily determined by the length of time serving on council. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions or comments for our presenter today? Seeing none, there is a motion that has been documented here, that it is be it resolved at the presentation made by R. O'Connor, Universe RO Consulting, Inc., entitled, "Mayors, Acting Mayors and Deputy Mayors' Roles and Responsibilities Be Received." Yep. Counselor Roy D. Clemente has moved it, and so, we are tabling the discussion.
So, I just, Mr. O'Connor did reference that with respect to our regional alternate. I wanted to hear from our town solicitor on that matter. Please, and thank you.
Madam Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. In terms of our regional alternate, we do not have a position filled right now. The, as I've advised in the past, the previous person who was acting in the mayor's absence, that temporary replacement is now over, so we would now need to have another person act in her current capacity of being away on leave. We'd need a new person to take over that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. We have Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you. So, further to that, Mr. O'Connor was talking about two sections of the Act. One, that is for a length of time that is one month long. Another is appointing someone for any time. So, I would think for business continuity, and not to be constantly telling the region that we've got someone different, as long as we're under this rotational acting mayor, we would be better off at the, for our regional alternate to be looking at Section 268, where we point one person for the balance of the term. So, is that possible, that if we pointed one person, they could step in anytime the mayor isn't available, even if she's, you know, off of the cottage for the day, that person could step in? Is that how, am I correctly reading Section 268?
Madam Solicitor, thank you.
Okay. I wasn't sure who that question was directed to, but thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Yes, 268 would be the appropriate provision to rely on, to put one person in for the balance of the term. We considered this before. As you may recall, we had the alternating rotational acting mayor situation. It does not align with Section 268, because you can't keep alternating people. You can only appoint one person for the term. So, we'd have to just put one person in there to act in all capacities when the mayor's away for any reason, and that would take us to the balance of the end of this term.
Thank you. So, I would like to move a motion that we do appoint a temporary replacement for the mayor at regional council, as per Section 268. I would also like to add to the motion that we update our acting mayor bylaw to fully quote Section 242 by adding in, "with respect to presiding at meetings."
So, we do have that motion on the floor that was tabled. Is this in a, you would count that in addition to the motion that is, that was moved by Counselor Roy D. Clemente?
So, it's up to Counselor Roy D. Clemente.
I'll take a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Through you, Acting Mayor Johns.
Yeah. So, just one moment. So, Madam Clerk, you've got the...
Maybe to keep it simple, I'll just do, ask about the regional, and we'll leave the other piece aside. So, let's just, just deal with the regional, and that way, we're not talking to two different points.
Okay. So, we have the motion that was tabled to allow this. So, your, Counselor Roy D. Clemente has agreed with the amendment, and what is that amendment, just for clarity's sake, so we can, we can have some transparency?
So, I'd ask the clerk to help me with it, but I would say something along the lines of, according to Section 268 of the municipal act, that council appoint a temporary replacement for the mayor at the region. We have to say something in there about when she's absent for the balance of the term.
So, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, through you, Acting Mayor Johns. I have an important question, and this question is with regard to the strong mayoral powers. I also read through all the information that Mr. O'Connor presented in his presentation, and it states that the mayor's, the mayor is the only one who has the ability to appoint people to positions, and she has strong mayoral powers. So, should we not contact the mayor and discuss with her who she would like to be appointed as a regional representative, if and when there's any absence longer than a month? I don't believe that we have the power as a body to make that decision, because it's stated clearly that it's only the mayor with her strong mayoral powers who's able to make an appointment. No, I'd like my answer, my question answered by our, by our expert that we have hired from outside of the town. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Connor, you, feel free to respond, and I'm happy to move to you, Counselor Carruthers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If I left that impression, I'm sorry, I don't quite follow the members' logic. I did say that you had to be elected as a head of council to enjoy employing the strong mayor powers. I do not see a use of the strong mayor powers with the motion that is before committee to move towards appointing someone under Section 268. So, I don't see that there's a correlation, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Counselor Carruthers.
I would refer Counselor Leahy to the municipal act, Section 268, that says, "The council of local municipality may appoint one of its members as the alternate."
So, we have a motion on the floor, and you're seeking information regarding?
I don't believe I'm seeking any more information.
So, then, if we can put the motion up that you have requested?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just bear with us for a moment.
So, this has been moved. Is there any further discussion to this? Be resolved that the presentation made by R. O'Connor, Universe RO Consulting, entitled, "Mayors, Acting Mayors and Deputy Mayors' Roles and Responsibilities Be Received," that, in accordance with Section 268 of the municipal act, council appoint a temporary replacement for the mayor during absence at York Region for the balance of the 2022 to 2026 term. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Mr. Crone.
I, I think, given what we just passed, I think it might be of value to act on this. And, I would nominate Counselor Terra Roy D. Clemente for our representative at regional council. She has the most experience on council, and I think she'll represent as well.
Thank you. Just from a logistics perspective, the motion that I just read said for council to do that. So, would we not have that discussion at council? This is committee of the whole.
So, we up to the clerk, but I think that we could put that forward and have it ratified at council? Would that be correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the committee could certainly pass a motion to have this ratified at council later today, at which point, I believe the intent is to carry out a nomination, and you would go through the same process of getting an individual to nominate another individual, should they wish to accept, and there will be a vote of council on that. So, you can ratify it for the purposes of carrying out what you're intending to do in council.
So, for clarity, for purposes, though, Counselor Crone, outside of the agenda, just with us having received that, is now tabling a new motion. And, so, what you're suggesting is, we need to, we need to have this motion ratified at committee of the whole, and then, and then speak to at council tonight, or this afternoon, at, in five minutes.
Mr. Chair, for clarity, the question was posed, whether or not this pertains to council, as it says, "Council appoint temporary." So, the response was that if you wanted the council body, not the committee, to undertake that activity, you can ratify the recommendation and bring that matter forward at the council meeting for action to take place. That was the question that was posed to me, and a simple response would be to ratify this, and then take the actions at that meeting, if it satisfies council.
To just be clear, we voted in favor. What is your suggestion on the ratification of this?
Mr. Chair, I believe all you need to do is make it clear that you would intend to have the resolution ratified the same day. And, then, at the council meeting is when you would carry out the nomination to call for a replacement.
Okay. So, how do we do that, given that we've already moved and carried the motion?
Mr. Chair, you can reconsider the motion that is before you.
Okay.
If you have the intent, that you can go back and reconsider the motion that is in front of you.
Okay. So, a, who would like to move the motion to reconsider? Nobody would like to move the motion to reconsider?
Sorry, I'm not sure if I can as a mover, but I'm seeing a nod. So, reconsider the motion to add same-day ratification. And, Mr. Chair, we've done this many times, after we've passed a motion, asked that it be added to same-day ratification. We've done it many, many times, and I think we're getting ourselves into procedural mess here. And, we just, how we normally do it is someone says, oh, and that should be same day, and we add it for same day. Oh, I don't think we want to get ourselves tied into a knot over this.
Not sure I'm tying a bow knot, or what kind of knot I'm tying. I'm just, I'm just...
Same-day ratification.
Okay. Respectfully, we can't just make up the rules. So, we just, we just, all I'm asking is for, to reopen the issue, to allow to do that, so then, we can, we can address it. So, we can't...
I'm happy to move reconsider.
Thank you very much. Okay. Counselor Crone, motion to reconsideration. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries. So, now, we're reconsidering the motion. Who would, anybody like to make any amendments on this?
So, I'm amending my own motion to add same-day ratification.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much, folks. It's 1:58. If I could seek clarity again from the clerk, we've only made it to G1 in the, in the agenda. We do have a council meeting that starts at 2:00. Madam Clerk, if you could provide some advice and allow for this body to decide what it would like to do next?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is an opportunity, if council, if the committee wishes, to recess the committee meeting, proceed into your council meeting, and then resume the balance of your committee meeting today, if that's the wish of the committee. Alternatively, all other items that are listed on the agenda would have to be deferred to a later agenda. That's another possibility for committee's consideration. And, just to note that council can always start their meeting late, never early. So, if the intention is to take a pause and a break, we can certainly work with our communications to advise that the council meeting will start a little bit later than 2:00 PM, to allow for a break in between the two meetings. So, the options would include recessing the committee meeting and resuming it after your council conclusion, or alternatively, deferring the items to a later meeting or a future meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there, is there discussion around the table for, to have this meeting recessed? I think it would be great if we picked it up after, after the council meeting. So, since Counselor Crone stated he, he agreed, if we are continuing that meeting after, is there an appetite to delay the beginning of the 2:00, or would, is it the desire to keep going?
I think we need a quick break.
And, how long would you like that quick break, is your suggestion?
Staff have not had lunch, so...
30 minutes? Is that the, is that the suggestion, 30 minutes? Madam Clerk, were you going to suggest something? No?
Through you, Mr. Chair, perhaps what you need is a motion to recess the committee meeting at this time, if that's the intention. And, for the purposes of council, what you could do is start your council meeting and go to a recess.
Okay. We've got, Counselor Crone moved the, moved for the recess of this. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Motion carries.